Good evening. It's Tuesday, March 22 of 2022. This is the Stoughton City Council meeting. First item of business is the roll call.
Okay, Haley.
Here, caught me off guard going first.
That's okay, thank you. Hirsch. Here. Jensen.
Here.
Lagaki.
Here.
Ayaski.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
Tokowski.
Here.
Caravelo.
Here.
Doom.
Here.
Thank you. I have ten Alders present and Hunt and Vanegas are absent and excused.
All right, thank you. Minutes and reports are in the packet. And nobody was signed up for public comment this evening. So that takes us to communications and presentations. And I just have a couple of quick communications. We lost a couple of local leaders here in the last two weeks. Raleigh Odlin was a former city council member, community leader. I want to express my condolences to his family. And then also Glenn McNautin, we were notified he passed away as well. Glenn was a teacher in Stoughton, as well as other districts, and helped out as a pole worker for many years. So inactive in many organizations. So I want to send my condolences out to Glenn's family as well. Any communications from Alders? All right, hearing none. Well, we have no presentations. We'll go into our consent agenda. And there's a number of items that are in there. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
I heard Alder Person Jensen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Reeves. And I would just highlight that there's some mayor's appointments for the newly formed Alcohol Policy Committee and Diversity Equity and Inclusion Task Force. And we're still accepting applications. If anybody out there is still interested in joining, you have time. So those are in there tonight. Anybody like anything acted on separately in the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. Next item is R 50 of 2022. This one has come back from our last meeting and went through Public Safety. Alder Person Jensen.
Yes, thank you, your honor. Resolution authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve a Class A liquor license for Ashley's LLC, Ashley Kirch, agent of the premises located at 7, or excuse me, 217 South Forest Street. Public Safety Commission recommends approval on a 6-0 vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Doom. Alder Person Jensen, anything you want to add from the last time?
This was tabled and brought back this time. I believe that, I think it was Lisa, they had some objections, or not objections, but concerns about the multiple uses of the premise. Did I get that right, Lisa? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot there. That was not correct.
No, that's true. I just had questions. It was an interesting mix of spaces. And I wasn't certain if the sauna was actually going to be in use, since it was referenced. And also, then it just made me wonder whether or not, if it was, if there were separate permits needed for that. So I just had questions, a few questions about the planned use of the building, if I could, please.
Sure. And we did ask the questions. And I'll let Candy, our clerk, give you some clarification. I think she was involved in more conversations than I was.
Yeah, sure. We did talk to Michael in zoning again. And there was nothing from the city on that part of it. I talked to the Dane County Health Department. And they had no concerns in regards to the sauna. So it comes back to us if we, you know, have a concern, I guess, from the fire department. An inspection such as that would be the only other thing I have not checked.
All right, any questions or comments from Alders?
I guess just, so the, and I see one bathroom. So do people change and in the bathroom and then use the, and then the same bathroom is available for restroom use? Or it's just, it's just an interesting layout. So I'm a little confused about that and the wine bar. It's just, and clothing. It just seems like a really interesting mix of stuff, which may not be relevant. But I'm just sort of curious about the flow and the business scope.
Well, I know Ashley is in the meeting here. So I don't know if you want her to answer any questions for you.
Well, yeah, I guess, oh, yeah, go ahead. That would be great. Like I said, it may or may not affect the liquor license. But more of it is just, it just seemed like an interesting group of opportunities, let's say. So I was curious about how that might all flow. Yeah, no, I get it. It is. It's a little like, okay, what's going on over there? So the sauna room is completely separate. It is a regular plug-in sauna that is on its own circuit. And it has its own room. There is a door that, you know, it's just kind of like a bedroom that's there. And the door closes. There's only one person in there at a time. There is signs that I've purchased to put on the door stating that there's no alcohol past that point. Because there is a little bit of, you know, some jewelry and stuff like that on the wine side. And yeah, so I mean, there is not going to be any tastings. Like if somebody books an appointment to use the sauna, they're not allowed to come in and, you know, do a tasting prior to, or purchasing alcohol prior to using the sauna. It would have to be done after the sauna use. So I mean, and then I know that the alcohol license that I'm requesting allows me to do two, three ounce samples between 11:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. So I can limit those samples. I mean, I'm not, I'm not going to be handing out no three ounce samples. That's, I mean, some wine is a little bit strong. So I mean, that, so I mean, that's how I'm going to gauge that. So it's going to be regulated. It's not going to be people just come in, buy wine and go into the sauna room. And the room is large enough where the sauna is. So if people want to change into a swimming suit or whatever they need to do, that is completely their space at that time. And that, that, you know, so they don't have to use the, unless they have to go to the bathroom, they don't use the restroom to change, so. So the wine is just sampled, then it's not our area where you could buy a glass, a serving of wine, then? No. No, I'm not going to be serving glasses of wine, literally just samples. And you take it home and you drink it. Okay, perfect. Thank you. That answers my question. I appreciate it. Yeah, no, no worries. If anything else, definitely let me know. It's, I love this whole building, so.
All right, it looks like Alder Jensen has his virtual hand up.
Yes, I do. Ashley, if you could answer one question for me. You said that people were not allowed to, to use the tasting until after the sauna? Is that your policy or is that something that is being dictated to you?
That's going to be my policy. It puts my mind at ease. And I just, alcohol affects people differently. Obviously, I'm not handing out glasses and stuff like that of wine. But just, it's my policy. It's known saunas and hot tubs, all that kind of stuff. You're recommended not to have any alcohol prior to going in and using them. So it's in the sauna guidelines, so.
All right, all right. So the reason I asked is that if it's your own policy, I'm just, my concern would be that for some reason you may change that policy. And I think it's a policy that you need to, you need to maintain. We don't have any legal way of making you do that. But I'm just encouraging you to keep that policy.
Yes, yep. No, I, I don't, no, I don't, I don't want people in my sauna after they've had a couple of drinks or tastings or, and the sale of alcohol is, we're out in the wine room. It's not to take in with you. And that's just the way that it's going to be. I mean, I'm looking, I'm looking to keep everybody safe, obviously, so. But I do get your concern. I do.
I'm fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any questions or comments from Alders? Okay, it looks like I have a question from our finance director.
Just a Scrivner error. There's an extra comma in your name at the bottom.
All right, we'll get that. Anything from Alders? All right, hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. All right, thank you. The next four items are coming from the Finance Committee, Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, thank you, Mayor. R 59, 2022, approving a cost reimbursement agreement for the potential project on the north side of Glacier Marine Drive. ISO move. This one came through Finance on March 8th, 5:00 decision.
Is there a second? Is that Alder Person Reeves?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Alder Person Schumacher.
In the, in the development that we are talking about on Glacier Marine Drive on the north side, I don't know if we can name that one. Is that one the?
Emmy Roth.
Emmy Roth building on there. This is just the cost reimbursement agreement, which I see there's an underscore in the resolution text, but not a real big deal.
All right, any questions or comments about the agreement? It looks like Director Shields is going to provide some more background.
Yeah, at the time this draft was put together, you'll see the company name that we're entering into an agreement with was the Sun Prairie 2021 Property Acquisition Company LLC. We now know the name of the company, Emmy Roth. And so the agreement will probably get executed with the newer updated publicly released name of the company.
All right, any questions or comments? You'll probably be hearing that name quite a bit here lately. They've been at the Plan Commission. We anticipate that they may be at the next council meeting to talk about the annexation request and maybe some other things. So we're really excited about the prospect of moving forward with Emmy Roth. Any questions or comments from Alders? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed. That motion carries. Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, the next item up was a discussion, not necessarily a resolution, about removing the Jefferson Street pedestrian bridge replacement. We're going to move that from the 2022 budget into, was it 23 budget?
We're trying to move it into 23.
23 budget. Based on the, the, some logistics with how the new bridge has to be placed. It can't just be a simple replacement of the structure that's there. It's different construction standards. And will require a little bit more work, especially on the, on the land side of it with the, with the abutments. Is that fair? So Finance decided that we would like to remove that from the 2022 budget and, and kick that can down the road when we can get it in the budget next. Okay, that wasn't a resolution, but.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion to that effect?
I will make a motion to remove the Jefferson Street pedestrian bridge from the 2022 budget.
And is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Tokowski. And Plan Director Shields, anything you want to add on that one?
I think we just have to highlight, it was an acknowledgement that we couldn't, we're not in a position to proceed with the borrowing. We really wanted to make the Public Works Committee, Finance Committee and the council aware of that, that situation before the borrowing took place. So we're, we'll explore trying to see how that can be incorporated into a future CIP. There's some legal issues that we have to try to work through first.
All right, any questions or comments from Alders?
I had just a clarification.
Go ahead.
This went to Public Works first. And I think you mentioned this, Brett, but just as a, to further clarify, I think, I don't know if it appeared in the motion, that it would be removed from the 2022 CIP project and considered for the following year. That was one of the things we talked about in both Finance and Public Works. I believe that we just wanted it clear that we weren't dropping it, that we wanted to make sure that it was considered for the following year.
Yep, that's true.
So if we could just clarify that in the motion, that would be great.
Okay. Do you want to amend the motion to reflect that?
Yeah, I'll amend the motion as to remove it from the 2022 CIP and attempt to get it into at least the 2023.
All right. Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Doom. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? None opposed. That takes us back to the original motion as amended. So we would remove it from 2022 and add it to 2023. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. All right, Alder Person Schumacher, next one.
All right, R 60 of 2022, authorizing to borrow for tax incremental district number seven, off-site improvements to Oak Opening Drive and Deer Point Drive within the town of Rutland. I so move.
And is there a second on that one?
I'll second.
Second by Alder Person Jensen. Alder Person Schumacher.
And this is to get the borrowing put in place so that the work on the improvements for Oak Opening Drive and Deer Point Drive can be done in coordination with the water main work. That's intended to be done. Work is estimated to be about 690,000.
All right, anything you want to add, Director Shields?
I think you summarized it well. Certainly, the council recall, we were working with the town to try to get this work, an agreement for this work with the town. We were just recently successful in executing that agreement. And that coupled with the water main extension between Highway, the 51 West Development, the Kettle Park West Development. So it really is coming, coming into place to be timed properly and coordinated together.
All right, any questions or comments from Alders? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. Next item, Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, R 61 of 2022 is approving an agreement with the Greenbrier Farms Limited Partnership, known as Greenbrier, to convey land to the city of Stoughton for road right-of-way named Greenbrier Drive. I so move.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Doom. Alder Person Schumacher.
This is that little bit of land on the northeast side of 51 West Development that would allow for that street to be, to go through between Nesbit and 51. Is that right?
Nygaard and 51.
Nygaard, I mean, yep.
All right, anything you want to add on that one?
I can just add, the public improvements are planned to be made as part of the 51 West Development. The land's being dedicated, in exchange, if you will, for those public improvements being made to this property. So this agreement allows the city to accept this dedication. With that stipulation, the public improvements would be made as part of the 51 West Development.
Any questions or comments from Alders on this one? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed. That motion carries. All right, next item is R 62 of 2022. And this is an approving the First Amendment to the Master Developer Agreement. Matt or Rodney, who wants to walk us through this one?
I'll take this one. The purpose of this agreement, the city has already entered into a master development agreement with the developers of the Kettle Park West Development, which governs the construction and installation of public improvements to serve the development, at least the residential phase of the development. As you may recall, the city approved a replat for this area. And so the purpose of this amendment to the Master Development Agreement is to make it clear that the Master Development Agreement applies to the originally approved plat and the replat. So everything is clearly covered by the, by the agreement. It's kind of a, it's kind of a technical cleanup here to make sure that the agreement applies to all of the approved, to the approved plat and replat.
All right. Anything to add, Rodney?
No, I think you summarized it well.
Okay. So what are we looking for here, Matt?
Motion to approve the First Amendment to the Master Development Agreement.
All right, anybody willing to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
A motion by Alder Person Doom. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Reeves. Any questions or comments from Alders on this one?
I have a question. Matt, does this, where you did your research, that the lots along the park cannot be developed until they put the access out to 138?
I think it would be more useful to discuss that question on the next item, which is the, the agreement for subdivision improvements for their next phase of development. Because it kind of ties more into that issue.
All right. I just didn't know which, which one it applied to better.
Yep.
Thanks, Matt.
Yep.
All right, any other questions or comments on this one? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. Next item is R 63 of 2022. Do you want to walk us through this one, Attorney Dregney?
Yes. So the way the Master Development Agreement is structured, each time the developer is ready to proceed with a development phase, there's a requirement that a, an agreement for that development phase be entered into between the city and the developer. And that's what this agreement does. It allows the developer to move forward with what is referred to as Phase Two. It requires the developer to construct and install the public improvements needed to serve Phase Two and to do so in accordance with the Master Development Agreement. And this may, it may be helpful, excuse me. Interestingly enough, okay. It may be helpful, Rodney, I don't know if you could put up a map?
I think he's getting to it.
The phasing maps on the last page there. There we go. Okay. So the issue that Alder Hirsch referenced is that there are some lots here within Phase Two.
Is it possible, I, we can't see your screen. Is it a shared screen at all?
I can do that.
I can't see it on a hybrid.
All right. There, how's that?
There you go.
I'll blow it up a little bit for you, too. Can you see that all right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so one thing that you may recall is that the city, the common council wanted to restrict the time at which building permits could be issued for the lots that are adjacent to that neighborhood park area along what is shown as Alpine Run here. And so that is still accomplished. But the developer is permitted under this agreement, under this Phase Two agreement, to install the public improvements serving those lots. So the street, sewer and water and so on. But by virtue of both the Master Development Agreement, which restricts the issuance of building permits for those lots, and actually, I see in the subdivision improvement agreement, Section 7 also references restrictions with respect to those lots. No building permits may be issued for those lots until Oak Opening Drive is extended to 138. So although those lots are included in this phase for purposes of the public improvements going on, going in, and no one could build homes on those lots at this point. So that is it for that, for that one. Was there any questions?
All right, any questions on that? Okay, so we're, we're looking for a motion on this one as well?
Yes.
Anybody willing to make a motion on this one?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Alder Person Doom, and a second by Alder Person Jensen. Any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed. That motion carries. Next couple of items are coming from the Plan Commission. Alder Person Caravelo.
Yes, thank you. This is R 64 of 2022, approving an extraterritorial jurisdictional certified survey map for a property located at 3060 Shadyside Drive, Town of Pleasant Springs, Dane County, Wisconsin, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Alder Person Caravelo.
And this is before us because this is within Stoughton's 1.5-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction. And this is a request to combine a vacated street, which does not exist, the street never existed, known as Cherry Drive, with the adjacent residential parcel.
Any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. Next one is Ordinance 9, Alder Person Caravelo for a first reading.
Yes, this is a first reading and Ordinance 9 of 2022, amending zoning code, Section 78-405, parentheses, 4, of the Stoughton Municipal Code. And this is some wording removing. Ordinance amendment is to change the word handicap to the word accessible in this ordinance. And I'm sure Rodney, and I think if I'm not mistaken, although I might be, Attorney Dregney, I think, had something to do with this, too, but.
I think it originated within our office. But thank you for highlighting the reason for the change. It also acknowledges the need for some ramps, accessible ramps, within certain required rear yard or front yard setback areas. So it's appropriate to make the changes as defined here.
All right, this is a first reading. Are there any questions or comments this evening? And this one, we'll be back then for the second reading at the next council meeting. If you have any concerns between now and then, feel free to reach out to us and we'll try to address them. Next item is coming from Finance, Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, R 65 of 2022 is a resolution by the Common Council of the City of Stoughton, approving additional work with True North Consultants for services related to environmental consulting for city and redevelopment authority lands on Fourth Street and East South Street. I so move. This came through Finance tonight, 5:00 decision on that. This came through Finance tonight, five oh decision on that, and we decided on that earlier tonight. So this is an expedited decision.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Reeves. Alder Person Schumacher.
In the one presentation that we had at the last meeting, we talked about the need for additional soil sampling along the riverfront development area, the Brink property, and this outlines the work that needs to be done with that with a cost not to exceed the $76,215, which would come out of the TID funding.
All right. Anything you want to add, Director Shields?
Yeah, True North actually worked with the DNR to at least verbally understand the additional scope of work that they thought would be necessary to track or identify the contamination areas, and this represents their understanding of that scope of work.
All right. Any questions from Alders? And just so you know, we actually met with Chris from True North last week, and we, we have the, the additional borrowing scheduled already in anticipation and hoping that you would approve this tonight. If you choose not to, we could cancel, but we'd lose a month. So we went ahead and got it on the schedule, and if this passes, they'll proceed here probably in the next week or two. If you choose not to, then we have to reschedule a month out. So we, we're trying to keep this thing moving. Obviously, we all want to see work get started this year, so in anticipation of that, we went ahead and gave them the go-ahead, at least get it penciled in for now. But we want to make sure everybody's comfortable with it before we move forward. Is there any questions or comments? All right. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. All right. Thank you. The next item is coming from our clerks department, and I'm going to try to help walk Candy through this. Basically, we received an email late last week informing us that there's some things that we need to do for the fall election, and there's, I believe, an April 10th deadline to do some approvals here. So we, we managed to get it on the agenda for tonight, even though at the time we didn't have all the information from the state or from the county. I'm not sure where it's originally added from, but Candy can fill you in on that. We hope they get it on for tonight, so we didn't have to call a special meeting. It's basically what we did. And from there, I'll just hand it over to Candy, and she can kind of walk you through it, and let me know if you need something put on the screen there, Candy.
Really, I'm still gathering information on this. This just came in late last week, and everybody is just really very unorganized in regards to anything that they can provide to me. I'm still gathering maps from Dane County, and it appears at this point that the wards that will be affected are four and seven, and I think possibly eight. And they're just going to be split due to the legislative changes in the lines, and it will be zero population in the newly created wards. So that's really what I have. This is just very last minute, but I, I just do not have anything else for you to base a decision on.
Have you had any conversations, Attorney Dregny, on any of this?
Just during our preparation for the council meeting with, where I had a chance to talk to you and Candy briefly, I have checked with one of my colleagues to see if he's available to provide some guidance to Candy on this, and, but I haven't, I haven't had a chance to see his response from that yet. But, so as I understand it, you know, the, what, the context here is that as a result of the maps that have been developed during the redistricting process and approved by the Wisconsin Supreme Court, there will be a need to redraw some of the lines here. And that's the, the reason that this is, is before you. Of course, even that map is a subject of litigation, so we don't know for certain whether this will be the final change or not. And, and as I understand it, Candy, the reason you're on the deadline you're on is, of course, all of these, all of these lines are being redrawn. So this, these, this, these new maps or this line drawing won't affect the spring election, the April election, but will impact the primary in August and the general election in November.
That's correct.
So I guess my question, Candy, is, is do we still need to have something approved tonight, or do we need to wait and get more information? And do you see them pushing back that April 10th deadline? I don't know where they dreamed that up from.
I've, I've not heard anything from anyone yet in regards to the April 10th deadline being moved. We just, I'm, I've been in talks with a lot of clerks. We're just really trying, we're scrambling to try to gather information. We just have nothing to, to approve. Some clerks are finding out that it's just a mistake in the, the lines in between the mapping GIS systems and the Wisconsin Elections Commission. So I'm trying to determine what we really have here. So I, I have, I really don't have anything to approve tonight.
Okay. I guess we'll have to stay tuned and possibly either bring it back or call a special meeting. Is that what you're thinking?
Right, right.
Yeah, and I did reach out to the League of Municipalities to kind of let them know and see if they can find out something from their end, and so far I haven't received a response, so I'm sure they're trying to sort it out as well. But we want to at least get it on the agenda tonight, just in case by chance that we had enough information for you to make a decision, and obviously we don't. So I guess at this point, we're not taking any action. Is that what you're recommending, Candy?
That's what I would recommend.
Yeah, and, and just to reiterate, it doesn't affect this election. It's for the fall anyway. So I'm really not sure why the scramble at the state and the county level, but I guess I'm not too surprised by it, given what they've been putting us through here the last several years. But that's my editorial for this evening. Anybody have any questions or comments or thoughts or suggestions? All right. So we'll probably be getting another look at that, so thanks for your work on that, Candy. I know it, the timing of it was not the best, and we'll work through it. Next couple items we have posted to go into closed session to discuss. I don't know if we want to just do that right away, or if there's anything we can discuss in open session on either of these issues.
At least on the 51 West, I think probably best to just do that in a closed session. I don't know if you want to do anything in open on the other matter.
The other matter, I think what we want to do is, we want to talk specifically about an offer to purchase that we received on the four-acre lot out on Glacier Marine Road. And then our Realtor Blake George is here that would join us in closed session to discuss that and maybe what our response to that offer may be.
Yeah, it, it's probably easiest to just go into closed session to deal with both items.
Okay, so when we go into closed session, we're just reading it once, and that covers both items?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion, then, to go into the closed session per statute that's on the agenda?
I'll make the motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85 print one print E, for the purposes of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business. So moved.
And, and I'll just add, that's to discuss the terms of a development agreement regarding the 51 West Development and a proposed offer to purchase city-owned land that, that the mayor described.
All right. Did you catch that, Candy?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Doom. Any discussion? Hearing none. Closed session is by roll call. Let us know when you're ready, Candy.
I'm ready. First.
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
Really wasn't ready for that one.
I'm sorry.
Never been first.
I'll take that as a yes. Jensen.
Aye.
Lagaki.
Aye.
Mayaski.
Aye.
Reeves.
Aye.
Schumacher.
Aye.
Tokowski.
Aye.
Caravelo.
Aye.
Doom.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
We have 10 Alders in favor.
All right. So let's see. I'll do inventory here. We'll get the room ready, and then, then we'll lock the screen here. Let's see. I have, it looks like one person that might need to leave.